The League of Women Voters of Cupertino-Sunnyvale presents City Council Candidate Forum 2011, featuring the six candidates running for Cupertino City Council. And now for tonight's moderator, Elaine Manley.
Welcome to the Cupertino City Council Candidates Forum. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Cupertino and Sunnyvale. I'm Elaine Manley, and I'll be the moderator this evening. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan political organization. We never endorse nor oppose a candidate, but we are directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our community strong. As a League member, one has the opportunity to impact local, state, and national issues. If you're interested in learning more about the League, we have materials on the table out in the entryway, as well as www.smarvtot.org. Our purpose is to encourage participation in our government by informed citizens, so please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 8th. Tonight, we have six candidates running for the two seats on the Cupertino City Council. They're elected for a four-year term, and I'd like to introduce them now. They are Donna Austin, Marty Miller, Rod Sinks, Homer Tong, Gilbert Wong, and Chris Zhang. This evening, the candidates have agreed to a set of ground rules. Briefly, they must abide by the time limits, and their literature is on the table by the entryway. Our timekeeper is Russ Howard from the League, and he will let you know how much time you have left and when your time is up. So thank you for paying attention to him. He is a police officer, I will mention that. Or he was. He'll keep you straight. The format is opening statements for two minutes each, and then we'll go into the question and answer period. Please, if you would, write questions on the card. Try to write one question per card, and please write legibly, because I have to read them, and I'm getting older, so I have to read them. You know what I mean. All right, and we have question collectors. Can you please raise your hands? Wonderful. They will be able to take your cards. Just hold them up, and they'll come get them from you. All right, and then after that, I'll read the questions. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer the question, and approximately 8:45 PM, we'll have the candidates give a two-minute closing statement. So we're going to begin with opening statements. These are in a random order. You have up to two minutes each, and we will start with Marty Miller.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League for hosting us tonight. I've been on the Planning Commission for the past eight years, working hard to make Cupertino a better place. Land use is a critical area of responsibility for the city. It's also the most contentious. During my years on the Planning Commission, I've assisted many individual residents, resolved land use disagreements with the city. In my discussions with residents this election, the most frequently mentioned concerns are poorly maintained streets and sidewalks, unacceptable traffic congestion and speeding at school sites and in our neighborhoods. Basic services need more funding. A few other things require our attention as well. Ensuring that Cupertino is a safe place to live and emergency preparedness is my top priority. The city's finances will take a hit when HP leaves next year, and Sacramento may continue to reduce its contribution to city funding. The best way to fill the revenue gap is to revitalize our business districts and grow our retail. Two key retail centers for Cupertino are Main Street and Valco. The more we can do to help them succeed, the more we help ourselves by providing more shopping and entertainment locally for residents and increased sales tax revenues for the city. Apple's new campus is equally important and broadly supported by our residents. On the Planning Commission, I've advocated for open government, made listening to residents a priority, and work cooperatively with my fellow commissioners. As a council member, I work hard for you. Study the issues, listen to residents, and bring honesty, integrity, openness, and logic to the City Council. Please vote for me, Marty Miller, on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Austin.
Hi. My name is Donna Austin, and I'm running for City Council. I have lived in Cupertino for 34 years. I am a retired teacher, and with those skills, people's skills, I bring to the City Council consensus building. I'm also a planning commissioner, a former planning commissioner of eight years, served as a chair for two times, and I really know the planning issues and the housing issues. I have, I was the Community Star Citizen of the Year this year for my community services. I've been really involved in the community. I've been a board member of the Cupertino Library Foundation, past president and governor of the Cupertino Historical Society. I've been a member of the League of Women Voters for years, and I think this is a great city to live. I'd like to see, I'd like to promote retail in Cupertino so that everyone can buy what they need here without, and keep our tax dollars here. I'd like to preserve the history along the Stevens Creek Trail and the, restore the creek and complete the trail, and promote the Legacy Farm, which we'd be working with the high schools to do. And I'd like to protect our hillsides and enforce our hillside ordinances.
Thank you. Rod Sinks.
Thanks. I'm Rod Sinks, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. It's very important. Like you, my family and I love Cupertino for its great schools, great people of diverse cultures, and great open spaces. An effective council member brings a good head and a good heart to the job, as well as passions. For me, those passions are education, economy, and environment. First, as a parent, I share your desire to prepare our kids for a world of great opportunity and challenge. I've been an active school volunteer and booster, a YMCA father-daughter leader for a group of 300, a volunteer backpacking with the Girl Scouts and hiking with middle-class kids at Yosemite Institute, also a longtime scoutmaster for a troop of 130 scouts. The city can and must do more to actively support, collaborate with, and advocate for our schools to keep them strong. Second, having managed two startups from infancy to success, I know what it takes to create a vision, build consensus, and make it happen. We have a tremendous opportunity with Apple moving forward on its new world-class campus. How we choose to develop the surrounding area should come with no less vision, creating dynamic public and retail spaces for all of us to enjoy. We can also and must attract the next wave of innovative companies to bring good jobs and economic benefits to the city. Third, I love the outdoors, and I'm passionate about protecting the natural beauty of this area. Last year, with a number of concerned citizens, I founded a nonprofit called Bay Area for Clean Environment. Our first focus is the Lehigh Quarry and Cement Plant. Together with the state and the Sierra Club, we now have positive momentum. As the closest community to the plant, Cupertino must also be a leader, working with neighboring cities to ensure that regulators do their jobs to protect our air, water, and land. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Zhang.
Good evening. My name is Chris Zhang, and I am the number five candidate on the ballot. I'm running because I believe there are a lot of things that our city government can do better, but they are just not doing it. We need to keep our government clean, transparent, and receptive to suggestions. I am the only candidate with legal training, and I believe I can bring a lot to the table. Please try not to hold that fact against me, but I think we have, as a city, need someone with legal education to analyze all the complex legal issues facing the council. My priorities over the next four years will be improve our education. I think our schools are one of the best in the nation, and we really need to work hard to make sure that it does, it will stay that way, and we don't enter a bad cycle. I would like to provide free wireless internet throughout the city, because I believe this will benefit our education system. This will keep our government open, and this will keep our, keep our public safety enhanced. I like to reduce traffic, especially around the tri-school area, but also everywhere else in the city. There are a lot of things we can do. I don't think there's going to be a single magic solution, but we have to do a lot of different things at the same time. I like to keep our city budget balanced. I have a degree from San Jose State in Chemical Science and a law degree from the University of Virginia. I work as a patent attorney, and my wife works as an occupational therapist, helping people recover from serious injuries. And I really think that Cupertino can be the best place to live, but we have to work hard to make it happen. Please vote for me, Chris Zhang, number five.
Thank you. Homer Tong.
Thank you. I'm Homer, and I again want to thank the League of Women Voters to host this forum, because it's truly a community forum, and I thank all of you to be here as well. I have lived in Santa Clara County for 40 years, and Cupertino for 25 years. I want some of you to know that I was involved in the Five C way back to show my volunteer effort. Five Cs was the City of Cupertino for cross-cultural commission, wanting to kind of look into the challenges we faced years ago. Right now, of course, I've been elected to the Fremont Union High School District for five terms, and I'm serving my fifth term. And as I have said before, our high school is ranked third in the whole state of California, a high ranking that is envy to a lot of our other school districts around here. Also, our budget is $100 million, which is probably a little bit more than what the city budget is, around that much. And we were able to manage all this with these financially challenging times with no deficits, no layoffs, and no labor disputes. And I have to say that a lot of the folks present here have a lot to do with that, too, to really give us an excellent school district. The high standards and achievements of our schools have attracted families to this area, thus, of course, shoring up, making Cupertino a prime real estate market. And the fact that, you know, with all these successes, what it means is our school is a big success, and consequently, we need to keep that up. And I feel that I have a role, if I should be on the City Council, to make sure that everything would be in sync and be working well. Other issues, which I'm running out of time, would be to make sure that we have a good environment, increase our tax base and all that, and make Cupertino to be the destination city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Gilbert Wong.
Hello. I'm Gilbert Wong, and I am the mayor of Cupertino. I was born, raised, and educated in Santa Clara Valley. I have lived in Cupertino for the past 20 years. Cupertino is a wonderful community where my wife and my two young children were raising Allison and Emily. Cupertino has a bright future, and I want to continue to work with you to realize the promise of Cupertino. Together, we make the city the best place in Silicon Valley for families to work, live, and play. Together, we, play, at Cupertino, we can all be proud of. I've been an independent voice on behalf of the residents of Cupertino, asking the tough questions and analyzing all aspects of the issues that come before me on the council. I'm running for reelection because I want to maintain the quality of life and our suburban integrity for my family, as well as yours. As mayor, I have increased our library hours and kept the libraries open seven days a week. I added two new school crossing guards, opened two new public parks, including Franco Park and Sterling Bernhardt Park. Looking forward, I want to make Cupertino even stronger. First, by assisting Apple with expanding their campus. Second, continuing the Stevens Creek Trail with creek restoration from Blackberry Farm to Stockhamar Property. Third, revitalizing our retail centers such as Valco Mall and the Cupertino Crossroads. And finally, maintaining our high level of service from public safety and our excellent public schools. I am proud to be active in many civic and cultural organizations, including the Cupertino Rotary Club, the Organizations of Special Needs Family, Deanser College Commission, the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, as well as both the DiValli and the Fall Festival. In these tough economic times, we need a visionary and experienced leadership to lead Cupertino. Together, we can achieve all that we can dream of for our community. I will continue to work hard as your representative on the Cupertino City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now it's time for questions. If you have written a question and nobody has stopped by to pick up your card, please raise it up high, and they will come and get it from you. I see a few more in the audience. All right, good. We do have several to get started with, though, so looks like I've got more coming in. Okay, so the first question, Gilbert, if you would please answer this one first. Are there any new plans for the Valco Park area? It seems continually unfinished on Wolf Road and the corner of Sears Parking Lot.
So that is a very good question. Valco Fashion Park Mall, as it was used to be called and today is called Valco Mall, was a mall when I was in high school. The mall to be, there was bullocks, the mall was fully occupied, and now with several new owners, it's been very challenging. It's a privately owned property, and there's three new owners that owns the mall. And we want to work together with the mall owners when they're ready to come forward with a project. We don't want to use eminent domain to take over the mall, but the thing is that when they are ready, the city is also ready as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod Sinks.
Well, my view is Cupertino needs more retail and entertainment destinations. You know that Valco represents one-third of our retail space, but it is not serving us well today. So picture in your mind those destinations that you go when you go out shopping and dining. Does it look like a place in Cupertino or someplace else? There are places that are vibrant, they have attractive atmospheres, and you have multiple good reasons for getting out of your car and lingering there. Frankly, neighboring cities have done a better job at creating these kinds of destinations over the last decade. It's easy for the city to approve projects with a heavy residential component, because residential development has proved the most lucrative for developers here. And those projects are lucrative precisely because our schools are so great. But these same projects put pressure on our schools, particularly our high schools, where the district gets no incremental money for inch incremental student. Many smart past and present council members have been champions of good development and have told me what a challenge it is. Valco exemplifies this. I believe that Apple's campus, too, gives us a good new opportunity. It can be a catalyst for the kind of high-quality development that will raise the value of these properties. Imagine, for the Chamber of Commerce and businesses in the city, what sort of an opportunity could they have to serve the 13,000 Apple employees as well as all of us? Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Zhang.
Let's be honest, Valco is not doing well. And what can we do as a city government? Well, we, I don't believe in bailouts. I don't think the city government should, at the expense of taxpayers, help out of business just because they are failing. But at the same time, Valco holds a very special place in my heart, and I want to help them succeed from the government within my power wherever I can. And this includes, I will help them solicit more capital investment into our city, both domestic capital and foreign capital. And perhaps we could do something more radical, like changing this mall into an outlet mall. I think my wife would like that, but there's a lot of things we can do. We have Stanford Shopping Center to the north and Santana Road to the south, so I don't think making Valco a high-end shopping destination is the way to go. But I'm willing to explore all the options within the power of the city government to help Valco succeed.
Thank you. Donna Austin.
Valco, it's Varian, Leonard, Lester, Kraft, and Orlando. They were a group of families that got together, and they built this mall. It was an exciting place to go, and my daughters, when they were in high school, they loved to go there. And now, it's sort of a ghost town. I went there deliberately, to Macy's, and I went shopping. I was looking for a jacket, and I was told four times by four different people, "Oh, but we have a better selection at Valley Fair." And I said, "I don't want to go to Valley Fair, I want to buy it here." And I think it's, there's some sort of a concerted effort on Macy's to make sure that we just don't get what we want. I went over to Penny's, and I almost got the same thing, except they don't have anything at Valley Fair, thank God. So I would say we need to actively get Valley, I mean, Valco back to its old glory, because it was such a wonderful place to be, and it's, I think it's important for us, and the retail, especially a third of our retail. So I'm all for that.
Thank you. Homer Tong.
Okay. As I've said, our school is a destination district, and why can't we make it to be Cupertino to be the destination for shopping as well? The fact that we have been talking about Valco for gee, how many years? I think 15, 20 years now. And to me, this means that there must be something lacking. Last, in the last forum, I mentioned that before we do anything, let's understand the dynamics. Maybe we need to have a kind of a niche market, that's one possibility. Another one is that we need to have more of the other areas built to make it to have enough, what I call, critical mass, that people would go there and do all the functions that they need to, their needs all satisfied at the same, you know, time, rather than going from one place to the other. So there are many areas we really need to explore, because with the Apple being built around in about three years, we have an opportunity to really move ahead. So before we do anything, let's make sure what, you know, would work possibly better for Cupertino than just imitating these other areas, these other shopping centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
Thank you. A key project for Cupertino is the Main Street project. It's on the HP land between Tantow and Wolf, and it's on, fronts on Stevens Creek. We currently use it today to sell pumpkins and Christmas trees. That project, if, when it comes to fruition, will provide a downtown for Cupertino. Finally, we will have a downtown area, a mall surrounded by retail shops. It will have senior housing element. It will have a hotel. It will have a park, and it will fit in very well with Cupertino and provide more shopping and more opportunities to recreate. That, we expect that to be a big success. And when it is, it will be synergistic with Valco Mall itself and give the Valco owners more reason to upgrade their mall and make Cupertino's retail a more vibrant place. And that is a plan that I had a small part in doing as part of the Planning Commission, and I hope to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Chris Zhang. The question, there were several people that talked about environment, so we've kind of consolidated it into one question. Where do you stand on the environmental issues, especially on the controversial issue with the Lehigh cement pollution issue, mercury pollution, cell towers, and other environmental problems?
You know, Elaine, I, I was born in a city that was highly polluted, and I'm still suffering from the health effects from the pollution. So I understand the importance of having a clean environment in our city. I understand that environmental effects can take many, many years to eradicate or to improve, so I want to provide a clean environment in our city. With respect to Lehigh Cement Plant, where everybody cares about, I think it's important that we monitor their pollution level to make sure they're complying with our different levels of laws and regulations. As a lawyer, I believe that we need to make work with other levels of government. I worked with, in the federal government before, and I think it's important that we work with county and state as well to really make sure that they are complying with all the laws there. I don't think it's practical to shut down the plant in the foreseeable future. With respect to cell phone towers, I think we need more cell phone tower coverage in the city. I think it's a shame that we don't have more, and it's really inconvenient for many of our residents. But we just need to make sure that the radiation levels are safe for the nearby residents who live near the tower, and, yep, that's that.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong.
First, I want to address the Lehigh Cement Factory. The most important thing the City Council wants to do is to make sure that the factory complies with all the Bay Area Quality Management, as well as the Environmental Protection Agency. The lead agency, as we know, is the county of Santa Clara, as well as the Calaver State Mining Board. And as long as they comply, I believe that they should, should be there. If they do not comply, I think that the City Council should come down very strong by joining other agencies and other cities in regards to that. Second, regarding the cell phone tower, I have no problem denying cell phone towers when I was a planning commissioner and City Council, and also approving them as well, too. There's a lot of concern regarding radiation frequency, and based on federal law, as long as they comply within the radiation frequency, they can have their cell phone tower. But the most important thing is that maybe Lehigh or maybe the cell phone tower is that there has to be the public outreach to the residents. And I think that when applicants come before us, they need to talk to the residents, explain to them what's going up, letting them know that they are in compliance with maybe radiation or whatever concerns that they have. The most important thing is that the council heard the residents very clearly, and we also work together with the Bay Area Quality Management to put a monitoring station at the Montevista Recreation Center as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
The health and safety of Cupertino residents is paramount. As far as the cement plant is concerned, that's, the cement plant must adhere to EPA, state, and local regulations. Cupertino must also continue to remain vigilant and monitor the plant's emissions with the objectives of bringing them into compliance when they're not. It is noted that they've made positive progress, and the plant, according to the operators, it has already instituted a process that reduces mercury emissions by 90%. We, again, we need to remain vigilant. Cupertino, as Mayor Wong has stated, has established a monitoring station. The city has also allocated money for groundwater study, and earlier on, the city had the EPA in, and part of the reason that EPA established a standard for mercury emissions, I believe, was the input they got from, from the city. So I believe it's important to remain vigilant and, and keep our guard up. With regard to cell phone towers, I have reviewed many cell phone tower applications, and I've approved some and not approved others, and I take input from the residents in terms of their needs with regard to cell phone towers and make decisions as appropriate per each application. Thank you.
Thank you. Homer Tong.
Thank you. I'm professor of chemistry at Deanser College for over 30 years, and I have been teaching my students about respecting our environment, you know, from way back. So am I committed to it? Yes. I'm committed enough to state that clearly in my ballot statement, that, you know, we need to be concerned about our environment for health and for our future generations. I'd like to point out to you that back 50-some years ago, that we have the Silent Spring Book that really started the whole environmental movement. I have hot solar water on my roof, you know, to take care of that. So environmental damage is something that we need to take care of at the outset, be proactive and not trying to clean up afterwards, like trying to clean up the land, let's say, in one of the piece of land we have, you know, for the dog park and all that, that's too late. So we need to, and I, and I strongly believe that Lehigh, and I like them to be in business, but why don't they just, you know, comply to the regulations and all that that have been, you know, called to their attention? In terms of cell phones, we have similar situations in our school district as well, and we have gone through a lot of the debate. We have allowed some, and others were not. So again, it depends on where it is placed, and some of it would be, would be, would be agree on and some not.
Thank you. Rod Sinks.
Well, thank you. The Quarry and Cement Plant
Well, thank you. The quarry and cement plant were here before most of us, and like any business, they have a right to operate if they observe applicable laws and regulations. The city derives no tax benefit, because Lehigh is out of our, outside our political boundaries. But of course, pollution knows no such boundaries. We've made good progress in the last year. The EPA has new regulations to take effect in 2013. The Sierra Club has action pending on selenium pollution of our water that flows into the bay into our aquifer. BACE has taken action to preserve the public's right to be heard. And the state has weighed in on years of operation without an approved reclamation plan. Now, this week, or just last week, the House voted to defer those EPA 2013 regulations. And they're the only things that are standing between us and bringing down the pollution by some ninety percent. So I'm going to encourage you here to write our senators and write the president, and tell him what you think about lack of clean air on cement plants. As for cell towers, we know that today applicants come in and submit one location for the cell tower. Cell towers, radiation falls off as the cube of the distance. So distance is very important. I'd like to see cellphone service providers come in with three possible locations, and let the community choose which will serve them the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Austin?
I believe that Lehigh should be held to the highest standards of air quality and water. The, the agency that supposedly they're in their influence is the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, and I think they need to be made to do their job and be vigilant. The EPA, the Bay Area Quality, the California Mining, all of them, we need to work with those agencies to make sure that Lehigh does get, clean up the air and the water. And I would hold them to their highest standards, hold their feet to the fire, because I think it's really important. The citizens deserve clean air and water. And so that would be a priority. Cell towers, I think there's people who are concerned about the cancer producing, which hasn't been proven. And I think, but I do think it's a safety issue that if you don't have good reception, you can't get the help you need. I think I'm renowned.
Thank you. Homer Tong, you'll be the first one to answer this next question. And the question reads, what is your stance on housing, and does Cupertino need lower-priced homes?
First of all, in terms of housing, I like to connect housing to our schools. What, to me, what happens is many times, the, let's say, housing is approved without, you know, in considering what impact it may have with our schools. And then, then all of a sudden, I hear people complain about traffic and so on. What I'm looking for is an overall plan. Like some of the cities, they have plans for a certain number of housing, and I'm certainly for building new housing, but in a controlled manner, so that problems of overcrowded schools would not be just kind of thrusted on us. The city and the school districts need, really need to work closely together, you know, for the benefit of the whole community. So when we worry about traffic, we also need to look at where the developments are, and school crowding and so on, to look at the whole situation in a kind of a holistic way. So bottom line is, housing, for example, we need to have housing for our seniors. And seniors could have a little bit more dense housing, because it won't affect our schools as much. So we need to look at the whole problem together and not just piecemeal.
Thank you. Marty Miller?
Thank you. Schools, our schools, our high-quality schools are a primary reason why we moved to Cupertino. And we need to make sure that they stay quality schools, and that we protect them, and the city and the school system work together to achieve that. In, well, there's also a need for, there's, now, there's also the need that we, we have adequate housing in the town as well. And the state and the Association of Bay Area Governments, every few years sends down their requirements for, for schools, I'm sorry, for housing in the city. We need to work with our residents to make sure that we address those issues, and we do it in a cooperative manner with, with the residents of, of the city. The last time that the Bay Area Government Organization sent us requirements, I contacted the concerned citizens of Cupertino and encouraged them to work with the planning commission, to come up with a set of locations where housing could be built. And they did that, and they worked cooperatively with us. And with, and, and as a result of that, we sent a list to the, to the state that people in this community all agreed on. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
This is a very good issue that's very important in Cupertino. I support a balanced and managed growth in our town. I want to retain our small-time atmosphere and also keep our schools high-quality. I think that it is being balanced, and how we do it is through our general plan. We just recently approved our general plan, and through the housing element, that has limited the number of housing units. We also have to abide by the job and housing imbalance. As more jobs are coming in, with Apple coming in, we need to keep affordable housing here in Cupertino. We have a lot of city employees, public of police officers, firefighters, who are commuting in from the Central Valley or from our areas. And we need to keep them closer here, that if there was an earthquake or emergency, to keep them closer here. The other thing is that we have done a, a good project with the Main Street, where there was housing in there. We approached toward the city concerned citizens and cares, and they said that we didn't want any more market-rate housing. And we compromised with a senior housing element in that product. Through collaboration with our residents, we're able to have a win-win situation. But also, we want to make sure that we have affordable housing in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Jong?
To, to ask the question, do we need lower-priced homes in Cupertino, is like us, asking, do we need lower-priced stocks? To people who are waiting to get into the market, the answer is yes. But to people who are holding stocks, that they probably don't want to see lower-priced stocks. And so, to me, I think people pay the premium to live in Cupertino and go to Cupertino schools. And the city government has a duty to protect their property values, to make sure that the property values do not get diluted. So for this reason, I'm against high-density housing in Cupertino. If any high-density projects comes before my desk, I will look at it with a very high level of scrutiny. But with that said, I, I support high-density housing for senior citizens or senior housings, because I don't believe they will crowd up our schools or our streets. And do we, do we need affordable housing? I think we don't need affordable housing in Cupertino. People can live very nearby, in Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, San Jose, and come to work in Cupertino. And I don't think that affordable housing is the right option for Cupertino.
Thank you. Donna Austin?
Well, I think we, we're pretty much built out, there's some infill areas, and I think they need to be identified. I'm really excited about the Main Street Cupertino downtown-ish project slated for the seventeen empty acres on Finch and Tantao, between Stevens Creek and Valco Parkway. The town square, cobblestone and new four-star hotel, bandstand, a great place to meet and gather. It's in close proximity to the Rose Bowl Mixed Use, which is across from Penny's, and the Metropolitan. And it'll be a fantastic synergy with new stores and a great place to shop and bring sales tax. Senior housing above retail, I believe in mixed use. And I think that we have to be creative in identifying places like Mary Avenue. At one point, I believe Rotary was going to build a couple of hundred senior housing, which never, they wanted. Then they wanted a dog park, and now we have nothing. So there are places like that we need to really look at.
Thank you. Rod Sings?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. I would have, on the city council, rather than having rejected that proposal, I would have voted for that proposal for senior housing at Mary. I think we need senior housing in the city particularly. Seniors want an option to frankly cash out, but still live in our community, which offers so much. I, for starters, let's acknowledge that our high property values come from our great schools. That's why people pay a premium to live here. So I support these specifics. First of all, regular communication between school boards and the council on a variety of issues of mutual interest. Growth policies that avoid overcrowding our schools. And consultation with schools as a part of our approval process for any substantial real estate development. Affordable housing policies for our teachers that do so great, such great work for us. Further improvement on traffic mitigation around our schools, which comes when we build more residents. The high school district and the city, for example, have an agreement in place which has brought us some relief. We need to do more with CEUSD in particular. Now, we talked a little bit before about what happens when things get too residential-heavy. Think about Velagio, that's just out these doors down the street, heavy residential component. We have a few retail spaces, including the pizza place and the coffee shop. But in my view, there's too much residential, and we don't have enough critical mass for the, for the retail. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next question, we will start with Donna Austin. And I'm going to merge several at once, so if you'll bear with me for a moment here. This is about schools. So some of you mentioned strengthening schools, being schools have their own school boards, how can you affect change? And then another question having to do with, should the city and the school districts improve their ties? So if you could talk a little bit about those two, please.
The city and the schools do work together maintaining the parks, and I think they certainly cooperate with the traffic mitigation, which is a problem around the schools. I would say that the synergy between the city and, and the schools should, they're both separate entities, but they certainly should and do cooperate and dialogue. And I would certainly promote that. And that's...
So then the second question would be, being the schools have their own boards, how would you affect change with the schools, working as a city official?
I think, meeting with the, I know that when I was on the planning commission, these school boards, somebody from the schools would come and explain to us how the, whatever the new plan was, that they would, how it would affect the schools. And then the schools would give us a report on, on that. And then we make our, base our decision and approval of the, of the plan, or the new residents, or the new. And I, I think that's important, to keep up that dialogue and keep in touch with them constantly.
Thank you. Chris Jong?
How do we improve our schools? Well, from the city council's point of view, I think we can do a few things to help our schools improve. One is to stop the current high-density housing developments. Everybody wants to pay, they're, they're willing to pay a high price for small unit condo apartment home to go to the Cupertino schools. But eventually, I think, they will bring down the quality of our schools if our, if our schools get overcrowded. So as a city council, I think, to improve schools, I think, one, we should stop high-density housing developments. And two, I would like to provide free wireless internet throughout the city, and our students will, will be able to access the information web at the tip of their fingers, anywhere, in the park, in the, in the city library, in the, in either schools. And I think this will help improve our schools. And I, yeah, I think we should improve the ties between the school boards and our city council. Especially, we need to work together to resolve the traffic around the school areas. And also, for example, recently, they put up, the school board decided to put up stadium lightings in the schools, which adversely affected the property values of our neighbors. And I felt that this was something that perhaps the city council and the school board could have done a little bit more collaboration to give more consideration to our neighbors.
Thank you. Rod Sings?
Thank you. My support for our schools and our youth has won me the endorsement of our high school district superintendent, Polly Bovey, and board members Hung Way, Bill Wilson, and Homer Tong. Thanks, Homer. As well as the CEA, who represent the teachers and other staff in the Cupertino Union School District. I'm very proud to have these endorsements, and they know that, what support I've given to schools in the past and what I will do in the future. I take a broad view of what's the proper business of the city. Our school boards do have direct responsibility for our schools. But the city can work with the school board on issues like traffic congestion, and be an advocate for increased school funding at the state level. We should also talk about issues of common interest, which affect all of us, emergency preparedness. You know, last week, it was greatly tested. And I'd like to add that as a Monta Vista parent, I felt very war, very well informed from early Wednesday morning through mid-morning on Thursday. So I'd like to recognize the great work of Superintendent Bovey, her staff, and the board, including you, Homer. And I'm appreciative that we live in a place where we have good plans and system in place, and we know how to use them effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
We definitely want to maintain our school quality. I have a daughter who attends Cupertino Middle School. And I think the best way to do is that we need to have collaboration between the Cupertino School District, the Fremont Union High School District, and the Foothill Deans Community College District. And the best way to do it is to get representatives of elected officials from the council and from the three governing boards of those school districts, as well as the three superintendents and our city manager. The more communication that we have, the better we can resolve these things, including traffic congestion around our schools, maybe Deans College or the tri-school areas around Monta Vista. Second, as we know of the traffic incident happened on Wednesday, there was a lot of parents who was concerned. Should we or should we not take our children to schools? And we can see how both the elementary and high school handle it differently. But the school district did a very good job, as well Superintendent Kwan, as well Superintendent Bovey, as well as the Sunnyvale Elementary. And it's a really tough decision to take my daughter to school, but we knew that they were all safe at the school. So it's all about collaborating with the different school districts, even though it's not within our jurisdiction. But the, all three school districts had did a very good job in keeping us informed as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Miller?
Collaboration, as Mayor Wong said, is extremely important. And we have had a collaboration in the past with respect to various projects that come up before the city. It's very important to continue that collaboration, particularly when a major project comes up. We want the input from the schools in terms of how it will affect them, and that in turn will, will affect the ultimate decisions that we make on those projects. There are other areas where we should collaborate, and that is, for example, in, in traffic around school sites. That's been a major issue for our residents, particularly in the Monta Vista area, where at drop-off and pickup hours, the, the roads get so clogged that if some, if an emergency vehicle had to get through there to address an emergency situation, it couldn't, it couldn't have done it very efficiently. So my proposal was that we sit down with the school boards and the school administration and the city council and residents in the area, and work on a solution that we can all agree to in a collaborative manner. I think there are other areas in town where this is very important to do, and with the school boards and the approach that I would take. Thank you.
Thank you. Homer Tong?
Well, all you need to do is to elect me to the school board, to the city council from the school board. Seriously, I think what we really need to do, because the city serves our community, our schools serve the same community in actual fact. We need to kind of do things more together, look at the broad view. I already mentioned about development, so that it won't be overcrowding the schools all, you know, in a year. So we have to put portables, you know, in our schools to take care of the students and all that. Other areas I was thinking of, we talk about business. Why don't we... Other areas I was thinking of, we talk about business. Why don't we, the businesses also collaborate with the schools? One of the small businesses actually told me that he's interested to have his business to have discounts or whatever. And I think some of that is being done. But maybe we should do more to keep our people to really patronize our businesses right in this city. All right? So we need to look at the whole picture. Collaboration, I think, is already mentioned. I don't need to go through. But what I, like our communities, to look at the picture in a kind of holistic view again, to make the best of what we can do. All right? And that would be great. And I'll just stop at that.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we'll start with Rod Sinks. And this is related to finances. With Hewlett Packard leaving, how will you deal with the loss of tax revenue? And how do you feel about balancing city budgets on the backs of city workers and services?
Well, I think it's a, it is a tough question. And I think what's happened after years of not really focusing on retail enough, we, our sales tax base on retail is suffering in the city compared to our neighboring cities. There's a lot of business at Santana Row coming from Cupertino. There's a lot going to Valley Fair. There's a lot going to downtown Mountain View and other, other of our neighbors. So it's really something that we have to play catch-up on. And seriously, I would say this. On the Measure C coming up, you know that hotel taxes and rates vary around the county from somewhere between 9% and 14%. Our measure in Cupertino is modest. It will raise our tax rate from 10% to 12% on hotels. I support it. It's paid by visitors who stay in our hotels. We'll make about half a million dollars annually for the general fund. This money will pay for general services like police, 911 responders, public works, capital improvements, Parks and Recreation, and our library. I believe there's a reasonable option, it's a reasonable option at this time, given the budget constraints that we all face. And there's another funding vehicle that I will champion as a city council member that will bring back roughly one hun, a million dollars to the city from the state without raising taxes. It's called the Tax Equity Allocation and deals with our historic relationship with the state. So I think that's another important source that we can tap into.
Thank you. Donna Austin?
The sources of revenue in Cupertino, a big source is the retail. And we need to promote that. It's, it just has to happen. Measure C is a stopgap that, and I know Santa Zay has a 12% hotel tax plus 2% business tax, so it's 14. And we would be competitive going in and we would be taxing visitors, yes, doesn't seem fair. But I'm going to napa for a wedding and I'm not going to ask what their sales tax is or their hotel tax is. I think the biggest source is retail. And our, our big business, Apple, brings in a lot for our city, too, and keeps it going. So I think those are the main sources and I would promote that.
Thank you. Homer Tong?
Okay. In terms of the revenues, my own feeling is that we need to, and this has been done before, but we need to promote more of so-called buy in Cupertino. And it's not just making a slogan, but thinking it through. How can we both help, help our businesses? Because if we go out and patronize elsewhere, what happens? Our businesses suffer, our sales tax base suffers. So we need to really be concerted in what the, our residents want in terms of services, provide them, encourage them to stay here through different means, including, you know, maybe discounts, whatever. And that's one of the small business persons that I talked to really was excited about that, especially if they can do more of that with our schools. Because our schools does represent, our schools do represent a very good percentage of the customers that they have. I, the last question, I thought you said is, on the back of our, you know, I want to make sure that statement you had, on the back of what?
Yeah, it was, how do you feel about balancing city budgets on the backs of city workers and services?
On the backs of city workers especially. I, I think that, you know, that sounds kind of very negative to me, that, you know, why would we want to do that on the, on the folks? You know, that doesn't sound fair or, or is it positive? We need to do better in other areas so that our workers who faithfully do their job, help our city, so that they won't have to pay, you know, these, the expenses or whatever to pay for. That's not fair.
Thank you. Marty Miller?
There's two sides to a balanced budget. There's the revenue side, and then there's also the cost side. On the cost side, the planning commission recently held hearings on improving the processes that the city uses to review and, and approve applications and some of the other processes in the city. By, by working on process improvement, we can reduce the expenses that the city is currently incurring. And also, by being very vigilant in terms of where we spend our money, we can also reduce our costs. On the revenue side, the, the sources of revenue are, first of all, the hotel tax that was recently passed, as others have mentioned, will contribute to our revenue stream and fill part of the void that is left by HP. In addition to that, the long-term solution is really to grow our retail, number one. And number two, to develop a plan to bring new businesses into Cupertino, particularly new startups like Apple. And, and have, and work with them to grow and generate sales tax revenues like Apple is doing for us today. The other area is the Tax Equity Allocation. And this is an area where Cupertino does not, or has not gotten its fair share of property taxes. And earlier council members have worked with the county and the state in order to increase this. And they got it up about halfway to where it belongs. The next way, the next step is to get it the full way. And I can do that by working with our local representatives at the state and the county level. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Jean?
If you watch the previous forum by Rotary, I can, I can mention the previous forum, right? So if you watched the previous forum, I was the only candidate who stressed the importance of having public safety in our city. And this doesn't only protect our residents, but also people who come into our city to shop, to eat, and to have, have a fun time. So if you read our local newspaper, you'll see that a lot of the crimes in our city are these petty thefts and vehicle break-ins. And I think if we make Cupertino a safer place, our business will prosper. And I also like to bring in more capital, capital investment from domestic and foreign markets. A lot of times I heard foreign investors complain that it's very hard to invest in this country compared to other developing countries. And I like to make things easier for them, for them to bring their money into our city. And with balancing of our budget, I think it's not really that hard. Just don't spend more than what you have. When times are hard, nobody wants to cut spending. But I think if we cut a little bit of spending here and there, we, we will have a balanced budget.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
We really sad to see Hewlett Packard leave our city. They have been in our city for many years. I think that this could be an opportunity for our city to be challenged and to bring in more sales tax dollars in our city. But first, our city staff was aware two years ago that HP is leaving. They're not leaving until next year. And what we did is we did an analyze through the fiscal strategic committee, together with me and Mark Santoro, with our city staff. And the first thing we recommended was to do a transit occupancy tax. This will bring in about $450,000 if this measure is approved this November ballot. Also, which was mentioned earlier as well, too, is that we need to improve our retail. And we already are seeing it with the improvements at the Cupertino Crossroad that was approved by the city council, with TG Maxx and Home Goods coming in, Islands coming in. And also, we received an application at the Homestead Square at the corner of Homestead Road and Deansa, with a Super Safeway application coming into our city. So these are things that we need to work together with our economic development manager. Even though Kelly Klein had moved over to the city of Fremont, we are going to replace her and, and attract more retail. And also, we need to attract more high-tech corporations. We already have Symantec left us, but we also negotiated with Symantec to keep the sales tax office here. We can also do that with Hewlett Packard and also work with CEA and Arcsite, which are already in town. We need to bring more sales tax offices here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Marty Miller. And this question is, did anyone receive donations from developers? And if so, how much? And secondly, where have most of your donations come from?
I have received donations from developers. And they were varying amounts, up to, I believe, as much as $4,000. I did not do an active job of, of raising money this year, this campaign. This campaign is very intense. It, it's very time-consuming. And my efforts in terms of fundraising was just primarily to put letters out to the public and something on my website. And I accepted all donations as they came.
Thank you. Homer Tong?
To my knowledge, unless somebody, you know, disguised, that I have received no money from developers. And all the money I have are my friends and residents and some of the folks that I've known for a long time. So on this issue of where funding comes, I like to feel that I will be representing the wishes of the residents to make this city better. And I won't have to answer to any special group because they donate whatever large amount of money to me.
Thank you. Donna Austin?
As far as I know, I have received no donations from developers, meaning people who develop houses and businesses, I guess, that's what you mean. I have received donations from friends and residents and political action groups. And I have acknowledged all of it. And we've kept very careful papers. This is one of the things all six of us have had to do, is file those FPPC papers that, just, it's horrendous. But very meticulous and careful in doing that.
Thank you. Rod Sinks?
Well, in politics, we all need money to get our messages out at any level. And that's particularly true for a newcomer like me. At the end of the last reporting period in late September, my competitors reported year-to-date contributions of between $10,000 and $50,000. You can find all of this data, by the way, on the city website under Reports. You go to the top, click on Reports. I came in at the low end of that $10,000 to $50,000 range, at a little under $12,000, of which I'm the largest contributor myself at $2,300. So the rest came in, for me, in smaller amounts from many, many individuals. I have some 48 individuals who have contributed to my campaign. And there's only one organization that's contributed to me, and that's the California League of Conservation Voters at $250. But I've taken money from no business. In contrast, Donna, Marty, and Gilbert all have one or more contributions from a single real estate interest of at least $5,000. In Donna's case, there's a $10,000 amount. And to broaden your question a little bit, to real estate interests as a whole, Gilbert has multiple $5,000 endorsers. As a businessperson, I've always watched my competitors to understand what investments they're making. And I know candidates that in past elections did not observe the voluntary expenditure limit. So this time, I elected to do the same. As it turns out, I will spend, spend well under the $28,500 limit and less than most of the other candidates in the race. But I'm, I am watching closely as the reports come out to ensure that I'm competitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
I also have received donations from developers. And the highest amount was $5,000 from, from several developers, as well as friends, residents, businesses, and PACs. But you can collect as much money as you want, or you can collect as little as you can, as you want as well, too. If you look at Vice Mayor Mark Santoro, when he ran two years ago, he collected less than $5,000 versus I had the highest amount collected as well, too. So it's really all about grassroots campaign. You can walk, you can do mailers, but you have to get the message out. I have been walking since July, going door-to-door, talking to residents and neighbors and listening to what they have, what's there, on their mind. It doesn't matter how much money that you raise or how little the money you raise. The most important is that you connect with the voters. And I think that these four months talking to voters, listening to what their concerns are, was very good to me. We did a survey. Ninety-six percent in the Godby study said that they were either satisfied or very satisfied with the services from the city of Cupertino. So I'm going to work very hard for the citizens of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Jean?
At a local level, I don't believe that money should play a big factor in this race. And that's why I signed a voluntary spending limit, limiting our campaign spending. And right now, we haven't even raised that amount yet. So it would be impossible for me to spend over the spending limit. And I want to take this opportunity to thank my campaign treasurer, Daisy. She has done a wonderful job in managing our campaign finances. And all this, all my campaign funding sources come from myself, some family and friends. And I do not represent any big interests. I do not solicit any funding from voters or big interests.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we will start with Gilbert Wong. And this is regarding dog parks. The issue of off-leash dog parks was a major city issue in 2008 and the 2009 election. It looks like the city will revisit this again coming up. Where do you stand on, one, unfenced off-leash dogs in the city? Two, a fenced dog park in a neighborhood park? Three, a fenced dog park on county land? What do you think is the answer to the city's dog park issue?
So that is a very good question. That has kept our city alive with filling in this council chambers. This is a very hard question for our community, and we had numerous community meetings. So to answer it directly regarding an unfenced dog park, I've been on record on the city council not supporting unfenced dog park. I feel that there is a fear factor in the community. And having them on, running around public parks will cause a problem. And that was talked about with a lot of residents. In regards to a fenced dog park, I have also gone on record in supporting a fenced dog park, maybe in a public park or maybe an off-site on the Mary Avenue area. We also found out that there was huge concerns on that site, so that may not be a feasible site. But there will be a public hearing to find another site in the city of Cupertino. In regarding to put it on county land, my biggest concern is that if we're going to do it, we should do it inside the city of Cupertino. It doesn't make sense to have it outside our city. And a lot of residents said that they would like to have a dog park. But we just need to find a good home where everybody can agree upon it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod Sinks?
Well, I'm electing to focus on other issues in this campaign. But I know this is a question of great interest to the many of you that I've spoken with. So here's my personal experience, and I can sympathize with both camps. As a first grader, I was bitten by a dog on my way to school. Fortunately, the dog was identified and I didn't need rabies shots. But it took me a long time thereafter to overcome the fear I had. Later, as a teenager, my family adopted a small dog from the Humane Society, and he brought much joy to our family life. And I know dogs, like people, need regular exercise. I've seen the results from the survey commissioned by the city. My approach to solving a problem like this is to get good input, seek common ground, and balance interests. I think that most reasonable people would agree, for example, that our park should be safe, clean, and serve everyone. So that's a ground rule. Let's see if we can build on that and the prior work that has been done on dedicated sites, such as Mary Avenue, and yes, perhaps the county, to find compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Jean?
Let me just get this out of the way. My wife and I have a dog. And I support having a fenced dog park, not for selfish, selfish reasons. My wife and I work our dog with, inside our HOA community. And we, we do not stand to benefit from having a fenced dog park. But I think having a fenced dog park is a good idea for our city. It will benefit everyone in the city, not just the dog owners. And if you're afraid of dogs or if you don't like having dogs walking And if you're afraid of dogs or if you don't like having dogs walking on our sidewalks, having a fenced dog park will take these dogs into the fenced dog area and away from the areas that you usually walk on sidewalks or other areas of our park. And when the dogs get a chance to play, to exercise, to socialize, they become less aggressive. So we'll see less, fewer dog bag incidents in the city and the dogs will be also flattered here when you approach one. And I don't think having a dog park creates any additional sanitation as concerns. If the people are not going to pick up after their dogs inside a dog park, which is unfortunate, they're not going to do it on the sidewalk or in other areas of our park as well. We might as well have a fenced area where we can provide them with the bags and let the dogs play. And with respect to the location, I think it would be nice to have dog parks near our residents, but if that's not practical, perhaps we can also explore county land.
Thank you. Donna Austin.
I think that dogs, off-leash, unfenced would not be an option. There's too many people that are afraid of dogs or for whatever reason. I do think a fenced dog park somewhere in the city could be a possibility. The, on county land, that was also suggested and I agree with Gilbert. I think it should be, really if we're going to have it, it should be in the city. Everyone should be represented and people with dogs, if they feel they need to let them run, then that's something we should do. So I would advocate a fenced dog park.
Thank you. Homer Tong.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm kind of troubled as these situations or problems come up because, first of all, I want to connect that this issue really reflects the concerns of our citizens and how much are we listening to them? The surveys show that the majority of our residents do not want an unfenced dog park and it seems to me that it should have been thought through carefully in the first place as to why, you know, that even had so much traction. It's a waste of the city's energy and time. I happen to have had two dogs and, you know, and I love my dogs and all that, so it has nothing to do with whether I like dogs or not. Yes, the reason, I also want to say that why is a dog park needed? Because our lots are getting smaller and smaller, let's face it. As land becomes valuable, people have dogs, they need to exercise their dogs. It's very understandable. So let's provide them with, you know, within reason, expense-wise, fenced dog park that they can exercise their dogs. I think it's great that we do that, but to me, problems, when they come up, let's analyze the issues first. What are people thinking instead of going off a tangent and doing all kinds of studies that amounted to not much of anything? That is a waste of the city's time and resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
Mahatma Gandhi said, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." In Cupertino, a very large percentage of the population have dogs and those dogs need to have the opportunity to exercise and a fenced-in dog park is a very appropriate way to do that. Neighboring cities such as San Jose, Mountain View, Palo Alto and Sunnyvale all have dog parks, but why should our residents have to travel long distances in order to exercise their dogs on a regular basis? So I am a strong proponent of having a dog park, whether or multiple dog parks in the city or on county lands wherever it's most appropriate and we should explore those alternatives as a community. Unfenced dog parks are another issue. There's a major fear factor about having dogs running outside without, not being on a leash and free to roam and I am opposed to doing an unfenced dog park at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we will start with Chris Zhang. The question is, what is your opinion on the proposed Apple site?
I think it's a gray thing that's happening to Cupertino. The new Apple campus is going to be environmental, it's going to be self-sustaining and like Steve Jobs said, rest in peace, we really have a shot at building the best office building in the whole world. And I support this project because also Apple is really, I think, a part of our Cupertino identity. We are famous not for a lot of things, but for Apple, no matter where you are in the world, you buy an iPhone and the default weather forecast is set to Cupertino and that has helped us improve our city's image and makes our property value go up, I believe. So I'm all for the project. The only concern I have is the traffic and this has been said many times, but I'm willing to work with Apple and to minimize the impact on traffic. Believe me, there will be increase in traffic, but we have to minimize it. And the way we do it is by exploring all the different options such as synchronizing the lights and widening the road and also work with our neighboring cities. The new Apple site will be close to San Jose, Santa Clara and Sunnyvale and we need to work with these other cities as well to provide more options such as bicycle lanes and mass transit.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong.
I was very privileged last November to meet with Mr. Jobs when he invited me to the Apple campus with Councilmember Wang. He gave us the opportunity to look at the model of his spaceship, which really truly landed in the city of Cupertino. We're talking about 3 million square foot housing office space in Cupertino and this is going to be a huge project for our residents and for our city staff and we're really happy that he decided to keep Apple in Cupertino. As Mr. Jobs says, "Apple's growing like a weed." And I think that there's a lot of things that we also need to take into consideration as we went through the EIR scoping report and some of the things that were raised was traffic, the closure of Prunridge Avenue, on how that will impact our neighboring cities like Santa Clara and Sunnyvale, and also how would that affect our housing as well too and our wonderful schools. So there is a long public process that's going to be heard through the community with Cupertino residents as well as our neighboring cities as well too. We don't want to have infighting with our neighboring cities like what happened with the Kaiser Hospital regarding traffic, so we have to be collaborative. And our city staff has hired extra staff to accommodate and make sure that we look at every single issue with this major sales-producing company that is coming into our city because Apple is our bread and butter for our sales tax in the city of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
Apple recently invited me in for a presentation of their project and after that presentation, I have to say that it is an architectural marvel. It also is very consistent with everything Apple does and all their marketing communications. Apple is an avant-garde company. They're innovative, they're on the leading edge, they produce quality products and this building says all that in terms of, and fits very well with their strategy and the products they produce. We talked a little bit about what the issues are there and all these issues will be very well-vetted through the public review process and through the environmental review process. On the specific issues that have come up today, on the traffic issue, it's noted that the number of square feet of building that Apple is taking down is roughly equivalent to the numbers of square feet that Apple is putting up. So that from a traffic standpoint, we should not expect that it will be significantly higher at this point than it was in the past when that site was fully employed. Apple is also, has also instituted a very extensive busing system that they actually send people all the way to San Francisco in order to pick up their employees and bring them there, further reducing the traffic. Similarly, with regard to housing, we have to wait and see what the EIR says before we actually make a decision on the best way to mitigate the issues that this new development will bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Homer Tong.
First of all, I mean, there are so many other cities that wanted Apple to locate in, you know, their location. There's no question that we want Apple to be in Cupertino. Actually, this past Friday, I went to talk to, I was invited to talk to the Apple officials two days after Steve Jobs passed away and so it might throw a little bit different light on the situation and that was, you know, they were, I guess, may not be concentrating as much, but kept on mentioning this point. You know, this is Steve Jobs' kind of legacy. Let's make sure that, you know, that it happens. So I kind of felt in many ways, first of all, Steve Jobs and Steve Wozniak were the graduates of our Fremont Union High School District and they love this area here and we certainly want to, especially for Steve Jobs, to, you know, to kind of carry through. On the other hand, the officials also said that, oh, city of Cupertino has been, has been, you know, doing its job and we want to abide by the rules. Well, we went through a similar, much smaller scale, to be sure, of all these processes with our fields and all that at Fremont Union. So I understand the process very well and problems that challenges would need to be met and they can be readily solved. So there's no question they would welcome Apple and make, you know, with the circumstances, make the best that we can.
Thank you. Rod Sinks.
Well, I'm very excited that Apple is electing to buy land, build and grow here. It's a wonderful end of the story to HP. I hope the Glenn Denning Barn, that is the symbol of many good things in Silicon Valley, is relocated to an effective space within our community. I know Orrin Mahoney cares a lot about that. Maybe I instigated all this. I asked for a meeting with Apple about three weeks ago and so I sat down with them and I got the same information that I think every other council wannabe got. And my question, one of my questions was, so yeah, what about traffic? They owe me an answer on whether HP and the buildings that are replaced at its peak, at peak employment, were more or less than what Apple will have, but I think there can be traffic mitigation plans that can be put in place. You know that as Apple moves suddenly, 13,000 people a couple of years from now into that large building, new spaces will free up in town. So my focus is to talk now about what incubators can we be building to bring those startups in? Sunnyvale has two startup companies, 200 startup companies at the Tech Plug and Play Center. Mountain View has Tech Farm and it has Google and Google spinoffs. We have Apple, but is this where Google's, excuse me, where Apple's spinoffs are choosing to locate? That's what we need to be thinking about in addition to providing for the retail that I talked about earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Austin.
I was privileged enough to, I was receiving a proclamation from the mayor and so I came to the meeting and there was Steve Jobs and it was really exciting to see him. It was like he was bestowing this legacy to us. He looked very fragile. He unfurled this sort of spaceship-looking thing and the glass is all round and it's really exciting and I'm really happy. I even got a photo of him, but I think that his legacy, he could have gone anywhere. He could have picked any city, but he went to school here, he was raised here and he wanted to, he started his business here and he wants to end it here. So I think it's exciting. We, I went to the Apple presentation that they gave us and we broke up into groups and everyone discussed their concerns and the concerns that most of them had were traffic. So I believe that Apple certainly got that message and we will work with them and mass transit, the, one of the things is the busing. No other company has ever had that much, I mean, the busing. It's from all over and they bring their employees in. So I think a plan, the busing plan and that, we can work with and the EIR, once that's done.
Thank you. All right, so our next one is going to start with Homer Tong. And this is an email question that came in and it says, "Because toxins and pollutants such as mercury, smog, carbon and soot cause thousands of hospital visits, asthma attacks and even deaths, I will support clean air policies and other protections that scientists and public health experts have recommended to the EPA to safeguard our air quality." So the question is, will you take this clean air promise that says, "I promise to protect America's children and families from dangerous air pollution in Cupertino?"
Well, first of all, it sounds like apple pie to me in that who would not support decisions, you know, who would not support apple pie? Who would not support decisions that would, you know, make sure that an environment is, you know, is safe, that we don't have pollutants and so on? What is important is that as far as, especially in this campaign is concerned, that what we write down like in our ballot statement, I already put my position very clearly. I'm very concerned about these factors of pollution because not only does it affect my health, it's my children and my grandchildren. I happen to have one of my kids living in Cupertino with a grandson. I mean, it's something that's long-term. All I can tell you, folks, is that I know about mercury pollution. I know about back in the 50s that the, for example, in Japan, they had mercury pollution resulting in brain damage and stillbirth and all that stuff. There's, you know, pollution is insidious and what is, what is sometimes, you know, what is the factor people need to remember is that you don't sometimes get the effect immediately. It's cumulative. So whatever we can be proactive, I'm completely for it. There's just no, I don't see any other position that anybody can take.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
A safe and unpolluted environment is paramount to a vibrant community and for Cupertino, we must have clean air and clean water and the city council has a primary responsibility to make sure that they're vigilant and they, and they, and they work very hard to make sure that's happening. And if there is a polluter in town that is endangering the health of our residents, particularly our children, we need to address that and come down very hard on them. As I've mentioned before, the current issues with the cement plant are being addressed by the city, by the EPA and we need to make sure that they adhere to state and local regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong.
I also agree with Commissioner Marty Miller that we need to have clean air and clean water. I believe that we have several agencies, including the EPA and Air Quality Management, that is monitoring. The really frustration that we have on the city council is that, do we trust these agencies or not? And there's a trust factor regarding our government agencies. So we have to see what these government agencies are saying to us and we have to say that, you know, are they, you know, who do we trust? And that's the frustration that I have. Also, addressing the Lehigh Cement Factory regarding mercury, there's other issues regarding the cement factory that, when I was talking to residents, including truck traffic, including the dust that's floating in the neighborhood around Creston's or the Montevista area, depending on where the air blows. This is a conversation that we need to continue to have with Lehigh, address those issues and see exactly where it's coming from and see how we can come with a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Zhang.
I can say no to clean air. I need clean air. I grew up in a very polluted, polluted city and clean air will really help me live a few more years, so I'm planning very far ahead. But yeah, Lehigh is polluting, no doubt about it. The question is, are they polluting within the legal limits, within the safe limits? The question is, are they polluting within the legal limits, within the safe limits? And I would like to work with other levels of government to make sure they are complying with all the regulations, and also to just generally be a good neighbor, and don't poll more than what you need to, and also make Cupertino a clean, clean place. And also, I'd like to replace some of our city fleet, the old Crown Victoria cars you see around Cupertino with a clean, clean fuel-burning vehicles such as Priuses or electrical vehicles. And also, Lehigh's trucks go through our city. The plant itself is outside of our city limits, but their trucks do go through our city. And that's something I think we should directly regulate. We need to regulate their trucks' speed, their noise, and also the dust they leave behind on our city streets.
Thank you. Donna Austin.
Well, I agree with Homer Tong. Who can refuse apple pie? And that's right. I, I think that pollution is pollution, whether it's legal or not legal, it's still pollution. And we should have the cleanest quality air and water. And I support all safeguards on, you know, any of the dangerous emissions. I'm most concerned with the trucks that go through. At one time in the 70s, they did a survey and watched the trucks and tallied, and it was something like 1,500 that came through in our area. And I'd like to see more use of the trains. They're only used three times a week now, and they have permission for seven, and they can operate those without, you know, so, so much pollution. I certainly would support whatever pledge or sign, whatever it was, to promote the clean air, so, and water.
Thank you. Rod Sinks.
Well, thank you. Trust, in fact, as the mayor pointed out, is the question. Who do you trust on this issue? So local intention is good. I was at Lehigh Cement two weeks ago for a four-hour meeting with their key executives. You may know that I've, I've been working very hard on this issue over the last year. The president of Lehigh U.S. was the key member of the industry that went before the House of Representatives, and now has succeeded in getting them to pass the bill blocking emissions limits that'll bring down 90% of our pollution, including mercury. Okay? The people here are sincere, I believe, in wanting to fix things. We need a central stack to monitor 100% of the output of that plant, 100% of the time. And we need, as citizens, to have access to that data, not surrogates in selected communities around schools that really don't give us a complete picture. I think that, you know, we, the fact is that mercury is a deadly neurotoxin. The head of the EPA has said that it dumbs down our kids. Are you willing to give, even if it's only a small amount, are you willing to give up 10 points on your kid's SAT test because of mercury pollution in this area? These are important questions. So we need the regulations, and we need to enforce them. And we need to do so for water as well. So emphatically, yes, I will sign pledges that help our environment.
Thank you. Our next question, we will begin with Donna Austin. This question is, what is the most important issue facing Cupertino in the next few years, and what do you plan to do to handle it?
I think the most important issue coming up in the next few years is, is the Apple development, and all that that will entail, traffic and housing, retail, because we need to provide that for them while they're here. And I would, I think, multiple, encourage multiple public hearings, listen to the people, and encourage, you know, input. And I think we, it will be an exciting development, but it needs to be handled right and carefully.
Thank you. Chris Zhang.
I think the most important issues over the next four years will be education, and make sure that our local businesses succeed. With respect to education, I think what the city government can do is stop high-density housing, really. This needs to be done, to make sure that our schools don't get overcrowded, and eventually our school quality gets brought down. And also, I'd like to provide free wireless internet throughout the city, and I think this will also keep our education quality up. With respect to business, I think what we can do is reduce the crimes in our city, make Cupertino a safer place. People should be able to shop in Cupertino without worrying that their car is being broken in. And also, I'd like to attract more investments into Cupertino to make sure that desirable businesses, especially green businesses and high-tech businesses in Cupertino, succeed.
Thank you. Rod Sinks.
Well, I've hit awfully hard on education, economy, and environment, and I think all three of these are key areas for our city. And I take a broad view of the role of the city, and I've talked to that. So let me talk a little bit about how, what's really important in terms of who you elect, because we can't predict everything that's going to come before the council. So startups require leaders of vision, with vision, consensus-building, budget discipline, and effective communication skills, with the ability to seize opportunities and address challenges, whatever they might be. That's what I've done in two startups over 22 years. Community leaders inspire and motivate volunteers to come together for common good. That's what I've done in scouting, not only mentoring 130 scouts in my troop, but enlisting and organizing their parents to help our kids grow up to be responsible, caring adults. The city needs city council members who bring these same qualities, who can analyze complex, complex issues thoroughly and thoughtfully, are articulate, and are willing and able to seek consensus. We need council members who can take a long view of where we should be heading, while maintaining a high level of service for all of our stakeholders, and balancing the budget each year. In my view, the council needs a better balance. We have more than enough real estate investors and brokers and interests. Our economy has been challenging for the last decade, and the council needs business leaders like me, who have built companies employing thousands. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong.
The most important thing on the city council is to make sure our city is financially solvent, and to make sure that our level of service is, remains high. And our city staff has done a wonderful job. First, public safety. With the tragedy that happened last Wednesday, the Sheriff's Department did a wonderful job. I was at the Command Center watching how we were executing to make sure that our residents were safe, to make sure that our children were safe, and also to make sure that we capture the suspect. Second, we did a very good job in keeping our libraries open seven days a week. While other cities are closing their libraries hours, we've been increasing our library hours to six additional library hours. Third, we want to make sure that we continue the Stevens Creek Trail and continue the creek restoration that has been approved by the city council, and we were able to leverage money and funding. Also, help with our schools in alleviating traffic, and we also added two crossing guards as well. And lastly, what I heard from residents is that they want to make sure that we have, that our pockets are filled, and make sure that our streets get repaved. So the most important thing is city services for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
I've talked with a lot of residents this cycle, this election cycle, and the most important thing to our residents, the things that come up most often, are basic city services. Fix our roads, fix our sidewalks, trim our trees, address traffic congestion around school sites, and speeding in our neighborhoods. And, and make sure that the, that we address public safety properly. These are the most important things to our residents today in 2011, and that has to be at the top of my list. In addition, finances is a very important issue as well. And we can't address basic services unless we have adequate financing. So we've, we've talked before about the importance of financing and addressing it, and looking at how we reduce our costs and increase our funding, and that's very important. The third thing is, is council dysfunctionality. That we, we face, the city faces serious challenges moving ahead, with Apple's application coming up, and many further applications that we can expect to come, which will challenge our city. And it's extremely important that we work, that the council work together as a team, and compromise, and work on solutions that fit the city in general. And I will lend a moderating voice to the council as a member. Thank you.
Thank you. Homer Tong.
Thank you. I know your question was the most important issue, and all of us are answering more than one, so I'll do the same. Apple computers and the retail tax base obviously is important. I think we've already covered that, so it's no point going through that again. School, traffic, how schools are going to fare with all the budget challenges, that obviously is, is very important and dear to my heart, since I've been on this, on the school board for five terms. What I like, then, with those two out of the way, what I like to address is one other situation that has not been, let's say, articulated well. And that is, I like to see, whatever we do, talking about trust, that we have good trust between the city council and our residents, so that our residents feel that the, you know, the city hall, so-called, is working with them, working for them, and not working against them. I've heard stories, talking about going around, stories of people having to wait for a long time to speak. Well, in our school, in our school board meetings, sometimes when we see a large number of people, we purposely move them up so that they can speak their piece, and then they can go home. You know, we need to really, because city, after all, is for the residents. We need to hear about their concerns, respect them, and really, you know, make them feel good about our city, and that would solve a lot of our other problems.
Thank you. All right. We're right on the cusp of wrapping up with our last question, but we don't have enough time to give you a minute and a half. So I'm asking, are you okay if I just give you a fast question that's 30 seconds for you to answer? Is that okay? No, who says no? Okay, well, all right. Well, if you'll play the game. The question is, give one and only one reason that makes you run for the council. And we will start with Rod Sinks.
Can I have how long?
30 seconds.
30 seconds!
Well, every person in the city has interests, and our government was founded on the idea that everyone's voice should be heard. So my approach is to reach out and listen to good ideas from every corner. In office, I will be accessible to all, working to understand diverse views, and then seeking common ground on which to build a consensus. When it comes time to vote, you can be certain that I will put residents' interests first. If you believe that we can do more to support our top-rated schools, if you believe creating dynamic business and retail opportunities is good for Cupertino, if you believe our air, water, and land are worth protecting for us and for our children, then please vote for me, Rod Sinks. Rodsinks.com. Thank you.
Okay. And I do want to point out, you will still have two minutes for a closing statement, so I apologize, because I realized I didn't clear that up with you. So I am sorry. You can use the other 30 seconds to give us that one reason we should, that you would want to run for council. So, sorry about that. We'll try again. So this is just 30 seconds. One and only one reason that makes you run for the council. Donna Austin.
Well, I would like you to vote for me, not just because I'm a woman and very special, but because I will bring reason and sanity and heart to the council.
Thank you. Homer Tong.
Well, I like to use the word trust. I've been on the school board for five terms, and after all these years, we finally have a real trust among ourselves. And it's so important that we build that up with the city council members and the community. Trust is a word we know a lot about, but it takes real action to really show the trust. And I have 19 years for people to look through, that I speak, you know, honestly, with transparency, and I would rest on the fact that, yes, I like the word trust.
Thank you. All right. Marty Miller.
Community involvement is a big part of what makes Cupertino a special place. During all my time here in Cupertino as a resident, I have volunteered, I have volunteered to help in some way in the community, whether it's soccer coach, school site council, Rotarian, planning commissioner, and other. I think it's extremely important that if you live in a city, that you give back to that city as well. And that's what I have been doing all my time here, and that's what I will continue to do while I live here in Cupertino.
Thank you. Chris Zhang.
To me, a city government official should be, is a local official, and he should, or she should be able to sit down with any members of the community, spend time and talk with the member of the community about his or her issues. And this will take time, energy, and the willingness to do that. And I've got just all these ingredients to do just that.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong.
I see a lot of public officials sitting out in the audience, and they're asking the same question, why am I sitting here, and why am I sitting in elected office? And the main reason why we're doing it is because we want to serve the community. It's about communication, it's about trust, it's about working collaboratively together. We get very little amount of money that we, that was serving on the council, about $700. And the hours that we spend going to community events, the hours that we spent talking to neighbors, the hours that we spent representing our city, it's really a privilege for me as mayor to talk to so many residents and to represent our great city, the city of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now it's time for the closing statements, and you will have a full two minutes to do this. And Rod Sinks, you get to go first.
Very good. Thank you. So I was speaking about the interests that everybody has in our city. I want you to know that you are the reason that we're here. We think, as we build community, I think that the most important thing is to be able to listen to you, to connect with you, hear your concerns. And as Homer said, when we have a big group of people interested in talking about something in the city, we don't put them to 1:00 a.m. We don't move them hours down the agenda, and we don't make them wait. What we want to do is have a special-purpose meeting, a study session, whatever it takes for our residents to be heard and give us the feedback we need. We need more consensus on the city council. I agree with Marty's suggestion that the city council is somewhat dysfunctional right now. And the way we achieve that consensus is by more discussion and working together. That has to be done transparently, in front of, in a public meeting, in a public forum. I think that I can bring that consensus. Every time I've worked in a startup, can you imagine what happens when the ball needs to move one direction or the other, and we have people pulling on different, on the ball in different directions? We can't move it forward. We need to be pulling on the same rope, going the same direction at the same time. And that's the way we get consensus, and we move government forward. Former Mayor Richard Lowenthal says this, "I'm endorsing Rod Sinks because he brings new energy to the council. He listens well, and I'm convinced he'll improve the business climate and the quality of life for families in the city. He's already working on a plan that will bring new revenue to the city without adding taxes." Current council member and former mayor, Oren Mahoney, writes this, "I've spoken to all the candidates running, and I believe that Rod is the best choice to serve the citizens of Cupertino on the city council. My support for schools and our youth has won me the endorsement of Polly Bovey, our superintendent, and board members Hungway, Bill Wilson, and Homer Tong, as well as the Cupertino Teachers Union. And I'm the only candidate endorsed by the Sierra Club and the California League of Conservation Voters. Rodsinks.com. Look me up. Thanks."
Thank you. Chris Zhang.
Thank you, Ellen and League of Women Voters, for providing this opportunity. And I want to also thank my campaign volunteers for spending their time doing the hard work. Most importantly, thank you for attending this and for watching this on TV. You guys are the reason democracy works in Cupertino. I think next four years is going to be important for Cupertino. For public safety, we need to keep Cupertino a safer place. We need to reduce crimes. We need to increase our disaster preparedness. As a member on the Community Emergency Response Team, TERT, I like to do just that. We need to keep our government open and transparent. I like to use social media and also giving citizens a chance to speak or rebuttal every issue on the city council meetings to keep, to keep democracy working in Cupertino. Someone asked me, you know, what's the difference between you and the other candidates? You guys all talk about education, economy. What makes you stand out from the other candidates? You guys all talk about education, economy, what makes you stand out from the other candidates? And I think that the devil is in the details. If you look at the details, do they have a concrete plan for accomplishing the goals we say we're going to achieve, and how do we want to get there? If you visit my website, www.chrisforcupidino.org, that's Chris, the number four, cupidino.org, you will learn more about my detailed plans for achieving all the goals and make Cupertino a better place for the future. So please vote for me, Chris Zhang, I'm the number five. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong.
First, I want to say thank you to Legal Women Voters for hosting this candidates forum. This is a wonderful opportunity for the residents to see six candidates who really would like to serve our community, but at the end of the day, you have to vote for two. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the city council and to be your mayor. The hardest part is not really about campaigning, not about fundraising money, not about knocking on doors, but once you get elected onto the city council, the hardest part is doing the public policy. The hardest part is bringing the city council together collaboratively and have, listen to all sides. We want to listen to the public, we want to listen to the applicant, and bring it back to the city council and have a good deliberation, not trying to filibuster the issue, not trying to push for one side. As mayor, it's really tough to, with this particular city council. But every two years, the voters of Cupertino have an opportunity to choose for two logical candidates who do good public policy. You have to do a lot of homework by visiting the sites, looking at the information, and a full-time, for my family business, with a wife, two young kids, is very challenging. But the reason why I want to serve is because I want to make sure that our residents of Cupertino are represented. In the next four years, we have Apple Inc. coming in with a new campus. We want to make sure that we have good schools for our children, and most important, we want to have a safe environment for our schools, and that was proven by the Sheriff's Department. So with the support of the Sierra Club, which has endorsed really two candidates, not just one candidate, as well as Congressman Mike Honda, State Senator Joseph Midian, State Senator Paul Fong, Senate County Listness, as well as Vice Mayor Mark Santoro and Council Member Orrin Mahoney, I respectfully ask for your vote, Mayor Gilbert Wong, on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Miller.
During my 31 years as a Cupertino resident, I volunteered my time in many ways. I do that because I believe that if you live and derive benefits from a community, you have a responsibility to contribute back to that community as well. Through many years of business and planning commission experience, I've developed a keen understanding of how to govern our city effectively and how to make it even better than it already is. For example, when first appointed to the Planning Commission, I thought that the application approval process was backwards. Staff would review an application and give input, the council would review an application and give input, then the applicant would fully design and present their design to the Planning Commission and the public, essentially as a fait accompli. At that point, the developers were not motivated to accept further challenges, further changes. During the last general plan review, I advocated for changing the general plan to require listening to the public first. The Main Street project that will include a downtown area will, is the first such project to be designed only after public input was accepted and considered. It promises to be a great success. My priorities for Cupertino are to ensure the health and safety of our residents, address neighborhood issues such as traffic congestion, and grow our retail, create that downtown area which Cupertino residents absolutely want and have been asking for, for the 31 years that I've been in Cupertino. And as a council member, I will work hard for you, study the issues, listen to residents, and bring honesty, integrity, openness, and logic to the council. Cupertino is already a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Together, we can make it even better. Please vote for me, Marty Miller, on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Austin.
Hi, I'm running for city council, and I'm the only woman running. Don't vote for me just because of that, but from my years of service to the community, 40 years of teaching, and I've lived here 34 years in Cupertino, I've served on many of the boards of nonprofits, League of Women Voters, and I have years of service and knowledge of the people here, and I'm a good listener, and I will do the best to bring consensus and collaboration with all, and bring balance to this community. And I ask for your vote, Donna, the number four, cupidino.com. Vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Homer Tong.
Thank you. Two decades, close to two decades of being on the school board has taught me much, and I have my fellow board members here, because it really helped me to see that we need to work together as a group. And in the last five years, I have to say that we have unprecedented success. Our stakeholders, including our teacher union and our classified staff and the administrative staff in the board, are working so closely and hand in hand that we are able to achieve all these great things for our community. Obviously, I would want to bring all these lessons and experience and, you know, administrative, you know, oversight and all that into the city council, all right, to make our city better. But what is more important to me, again, is that, you know, we talk about schools and all that, but ultimately, the residents have to say, do we really trust, you know, this candidate? In terms of what we say and what we do, I have 19 years of record for you to look at, and I dare to say that with my 19 years of elective office, I have more than all of your elective office experiences combined. Now, all of the five others. But that's not to say why, you know, why I should be on the city council. I'm on the city council because I simply just want to be your neighbor, I care, and I think there's still a lot that we can do. I want, every one of us, again, I mentioned that, that as your residents, that you feel proud of your city, that you feel the city hall is working for you, okay, with you, and never against you, all right? And I just see symptoms of the other issues coming up because we are not in sync yet, and we can do better.
Thank you. All right, well, this concludes the Cupertino City Council Candidates Forum. You can find more election information at the Cupertino.org website, as well as smartvoter.org. I would like to thank the candidates for participating in this. I thank my fellow league members for helping to pull this all together. Thank you for the city of Cupertino for providing the room and for filming this, and thank you all very much for joining us tonight. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 8th. Good night.[1733.71][1733.71]